I'd like to call this meeting to order. Apologize for our delays coming out of closed session. We just had a number of issues and we had outside counsel that we had to take advantage of while he was still on the clock. And so, roll call please, Roberta. We've already done that, do we have to do it again? We don't have to, do we? All right. We have an announcement coming out of closed session. Noel?
Thank you. Regarding item five on the special meeting agenda and the regular meeting agenda, the Board of Supervisors has voted five to zero to authorize the county of Ventura to join with other counties, including Sacramento, San Diego, and Riverside, ensuing the state, the state comptroller, and certain other state officers to compel timely payment to counties of the amounts due to counties which the state comptroller has said he will defer. The county of Ventura will not incur litigation costs as a result of this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'll please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hand over heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes for...
To make a motion to approve the minutes. How long do you have?
It's been a motion. Is there a second? Okay. In the interest of time, I'll second that whenever your motion gets... There we go. Please vote on the motion. Thank you. Agenda review. Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Yes, supervisors. Item number sixteen has been requested to be removed from the agenda. Item twenty-two is also to be removed from the agenda. Item twenty-five has a revised resolution, and the statement is on the agenda only indicated. Supervisor Bennett has five minutes, but there's a revision. Item twenty-sixth is removed. Item twenty-nine on the agenda title only, removed, the CEO recommends approval as proposed. Item thirty, agenda title only, materials if any will be made available on Tuesday, February tenth, not February ninth. And item thirty-eight, we've requested the item to be removed from the agenda, and item thirty-six has a revised board letter.
Thank you very much. We need a motion to approve the agenda? I'll second it. In the interest of time, we need to vote, please. Thank you. The agenda has been approved as modified. There we go. And we're now to the consent calendar minus item sixteen and twenty-two. We need a motion? We need to vote? Thank you. Yes.
On that, I just wanted to compliment both the item fifteen that the city of Moore Park chose to do a special election and replace their council member instead of appointing. I thought that was a good move. And then also on the health care agency, item eighteen, to be able to reduce the number -- reduce funds and still end up with more quality service, I think is a real plus. So, kudos on that one, on both.
Thank you. For the benefit of the public, we started our morning at seven-thirty in closed session because at twelve o'clock Supervisor Long and I have to leave to meet with the Assistant Secretary of the Army and four colonels that are out here to look at some projects. And so, in the interest of that, we're going to have to modify our public comment time period down, make sure that we give people, everybody, an opportunity to speak, but we're going to ask that public speakers limit their comments to two minutes this morning. And so, we are now at public comments, and the clerk will give me Sue Kelly. And my apologies for the last-minute modification of the time there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Sue Kelly with the League of Women Voters, and I'll be very brief. This morning, we have a new observer who will join our group in the person of, I'm going to forget, Melaney Ashen, A-S-H-E-N. Melaney has -- is a new member with the League, fairly new member with the League. Some of you may have met her at Candidates' Forums where she gave a lot of help this last November. She is a retired high school teacher of English and Spanish. Taught in Colorado, Indiana, and Minnesota before coming to California, and spent thirty years with the Caneo District. And now, in retirement, she's very active with the Caneo Open Space District as a volunteer. I wanted to introduce her to all of you, so you'll recognize her face when it's her turn to observe. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Next speaker, Amanda Vescas. And on deck, Julie Medina?
We're going to be doing this as a team effort.
Thank you.
Supervisor, you look great up there. Thank you. Props to you, ma. This is very, very timely, and I hope that you guys know that I've been up here for the past eight, ten years, same old refrain. It's very, very timely. The winds of common sense are maybe blowing upon us. I came to this county as a vocational, educational expert about twenty years ago. That's right about the time that the Board of Supervisors, and none of you guys were around, so it's not on you. But somewhere along the way, you took Department of Labor money, workforce investment money, and you started doing some, the Board of Supervisors, started doing some very curious things with that money. And that is, you started spinning it to do what you came to know as remediation. Remediation, remediation, with the idea of someday getting our youth to work, while ten, twelve years down the road, we're still remediating theoretically, and we're getting kids no work at all. With this economy, young people like old people need jobs. You're looking at the face of a young adult who needs a job. You folks have the opportunity right now to make some incredible changes with this ridiculous notion of remediation. It never gets anywhere beyond giving people functionaries jobs, but it never puts a kid in a workplace, in a job. What it's done is, it's basically taken the employment community off the hook. They don't have to provide jobs. It's taken social service providers, in the old days, we used to knock on every door. They don't have to do that anymore because there's no jobs. And this county has done very, very little in providing job opportunities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vescas.
Julie is going to give me your time.
Julie can speak.
We've agreed, this is what we're doing.
I'm sorry, we could have people transferring time all the time, but be consistent with everybody else. I think we have to let people speak.
Let's do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Barbara Johnson. And then, on deck, Graham Galliford.
Good morning, members of the Board. I'm here today, I have been active with the cleanup at Rocket Dine as a citizen and as a member of the work group. So therefore, I am very sympathetic to Assemblymember Smice's support for the former Santa Susana Field Laboratory eventually being made into a park, once it has been thoroughly cleaned up. However, because the state says cleanup cannot occur before 2017 at the earliest, I think the bill is quite premature at this point. Decades of sloppy practices and accidents, including a partial reactor meltdown, resulted in widespread radioactive and chemical contamination throughout the site. After years of resistance to Boeing and the U.S. Department of Energy to an effective cleanup, SB 990 became law a little over a year ago, requiring cleanup to standards protective of the community. That cleanup effort has not yet really begun, let alone been completed. So legislation about how to make the land, once cleaned up, into a park is, I think, jumping the gun. Furthermore, I am somewhat concerned that should AB 102 go forward, premature as it is, it could be subsequently modified as it goes through the legislative process. So as to weaken the cleanup standards now in state law, this cannot be permitted. It has been a long battle to get a law in place, SB 990, to assure a cleanup of the highest standards to safeguard the health of the public, and nothing should be allowed to put at risk that great victory for our communities. Thus, I recommend not endorsing AB 102 at this time, as any potential use of SSFL as a park is a decade away at least, and by state law, it must be cleaned up first.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Your time is up. We appreciate it.
May I just finish up here?
I'm sorry, we're really...
In section four, I insist that the state law be...
And that is an agenda item that will be, that is on our agenda, that we'll be discussing if you're here for that agenda item also.
I had another item I wanted to speak to. Can I put in another card?
Roberta, yeah, our policies, yeah, right. Thank you. Mr. Galliford?
Good morning. I believe that you may know that we, amongst others, lodged an appeal with the Coastal Commission against the project the Board of Supervisors approved for a lifeguard tower on Silver Strand Beach. At the meeting of the Commission on February the fourth, the Commission unanimously upheld our appeal and found that there were substantial issues with this proposed building project. We tried to make you aware of these at multiple hearings of the Board and multiple meetings since July of 2006, and the issues are many and substantial. The issues include the bad proposed location, the damage to public views, particularly for the handicapped, the damage to the environment, the creation of beach erosion, the nonconformance of this building in height, the lack of proper notification of this building, and the incorrect declaration of secret exemption, which was only allowed to pass as a result of the passage of the statute of limitations. The finding that the Coastal Commission now has made presents the county with a golden opportunity to revise the project in line with the needs of the community and the environment, and to do the right thing in the revision of this project. Concerning the revision of the building proposal at Silver Strand, we would like you to ensure that the Public Works Agency, the Resource Management Agency, and the Harbor Department work cooperatively with the community to arrive at the development of a proposal that meets the needs of the beach-going community, and at the same time, conserves the beach and the environment. And we could even save money if we do this. We believe that the alternatives that have been previously presented to the county by the public that fully satisfy the needs of the community without compromising the visual quality of the location, conserving the environment, and at the same time complying with the LCP and FEMA requirements have not been properly considered. We'd like to make sure that you, the Supervisors, ensure the proper consideration of these alternatives and the involvement of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you staying right on schedule, Mr. Galliford. And that ends our public comment period. Thank you very much, ma'am. Ma'am, what is the item that you want to speak on? The other item, just what's that number?
It's not a number. Driving here today, I had a phone call about something in the newspaper, about a general plan amendment for affordable housing.
I just want to know what, excuse me, ma'am, I just want to know what item number it is. Oh, it's just the topic of affordable housing. Right, it's not another agendized item. Yeah, I'm sorry, we have limited everybody in the public comment to that two-minute period.
I can't talk about the fact that we weren't informed.
Ma'am, I'm going to give you a minute, okay? Because you've come down here, I certainly don't want to...
Okay. I'm sorry to take up the extra time.
No, no problem. I'm sorry for our confusion here this morning.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I found out from a phone call this morning about an article in the Simi Valley Star that I really feel that our Supervisor Foy should have informed the people of, because we're going to be very negatively impacted by this proposed amendment for affordable housing. So I would just like to ask that, please do keep us informed, because we would have been down here in force today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, we have our board comments, and in the interest of the same things that I'm asking the public to do, I'll ask the board members to be as concise as possible. Supervisor Long, then you could set a great role model.
I'd ask that the Board adjourn in memory of the list I've provided, and that I'll hold my comments on the state for later.
All right. Supervisor Ergo.
And I'll do the same, you know, I have the list here that I just submit in adjournment of memory of my constituents.
All right. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I'd also ask that we close in memory of the people on this list, and I wasn't at our last board meeting, I'm thankful that at that meeting you didn't kill me off like you did at the last meeting. I recall, kind of a scenario where we lost some supervisors, and I was one of them, but was able to represent Southern California, looking at setting greenhouse gas emission targets at the state. So I look forward to getting input from our Board in future meetings.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy?
I have a list I'd like to adjourn in memory of, and just a real quick comment. I met with the Attorney General Jerry Brown, and we talked about regards to the prison hospital here in Ventura County. And as you know, the group I'm part of, we filed a lawsuit to stop that. He's also filed a lawsuit to stop it statewide, so taking coordination, we have some opportunity. We've seen that Clark Kelso has tried to maybe do some modifications, we've got to keep the pressure on in order to keep this out of our county. So, it's my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I would like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the list, but unfortunately, I have one name that I do want to actually call out, and that's John Paul Womack, that's Tom Womack, the Assistant CEO here for many years under Johnny Johnson, lost his father, and his father was born in Fort Worth, Texas, in 1923, resided in Andersonville, Tennessee, until joining the United States Navy at age seventeen. And I think we all want to wish Tom well. He's had a number of tragedies visit his family during his service here with the county. With that, we are ready for our ten o'clock's, and I think as a courtesy to our 2-1-1 people, I'd like to take them in this order. That is item twenty-five. We will do our resolution honoring those three individuals, and then we'll skip twenty-six, and we'll go to twenty-seven, so that we get to 2-1-1 as promptly as possible, then we'll go back to twenty-six and twenty-eight for those two items. So, if we could have Elizabeth Humphrey, Leah Davis, and Kristy Arnold all come forward, and it's a real pleasure to do this, and Elena is there, Martinez?
She had to leave our presentation.
She did, huh? Okay, great. And then Jenny?
Yes.
All right, and Jenny is here? Great. If I could just, real quick, as they're going to make some comments, but this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Elizabeth Humphrey, Leah Davis, and Kristy Arnold, and proclaiming February 2009 as National Parent Leadership Month. And I see you have some comments there, so I'd like you to go ahead and make those while I come down to present this resolution of these three individuals, and we really thank you for your service here.
Really want to thank you for taking this time to honor Parents with Purpose. I'm Donna Koonin, the Supervisor in Children and Family Services. I am the liaison with Human Service Agency and filling in for Elaine Martinez's program manager. Parents with Purpose, this is such a joy and an honor to be able to be here while, with the recognition that you have for Parents with Purpose. They are a small group, but they are mighty in spirit and in passion for the work that they do. They assist parents to navigate the very complicated and emotionally overwhelming juvenile court dependency system. And having been through that process themselves, they have a unique opportunity to guide these parents. And I also want to say that it's an honor for me to have them at meetings that I facilitate, because often, when Children and Family Services is going through policies and procedures, I look out at the table and see a member of Parents with Purpose and check myself into, how is this going to affect the parents that we work with? And they make that very real, and I really appreciate them. And they make Human Service Agency and Children and Family Services a better, better policies, a better programs, and I just can't thank them enough. They're a joy to work for.
Thank you.
Can I go? Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. I would like to introduce our new manager for the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, the Designated Child Abuse Prevention Council. Her name is Elaine Martinez Curry, and we're very excited to have her as part of our team. And the partnership has been supporting Parents with Purpose for many years now, and we're very honored and privileged to be a part of what they do. And I would like to introduce Leah Davis. Elizabeth Humphrey was not able to be here this morning. She is the co-founder of Parents with Purpose, due to some health issues. So Leah is going to be speaking on behalf of Parents with Purpose. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. And I'd like to give you a little background of some of the work that we are doing in the community nationally and at the state and local levels. Nationally, I am involved on the National Birth Parents Advocacy Network, which is a group that is designed to create and develop policies and procedures for birth parent rights. Also, I am a member of the California State Parent Team, where we weigh in on policy and procedure on different state committees. I sit on the Child Welfare Council's Permanency Planning Committee up in Sacramento. At the state level, I, at the county level, I'm on the Coastal Tri-County's CAF seat, which is our Child Abuse Prevention Council regionally as a parent advisor. Also, in the county, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, and as a parent advisor. Once again, and locally, the differential response, which is our pathways of rolling out services for families. I just wanted to say once again, just thank you, and the work that we're doing in shaping the decisions that they make about our families is very important, and I feel a passion and a commitment to helping serve our families and our communities, and I want to thank you for backing us up and giving us this opportunity to be here today.
Could we get a quick picture with you?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
If I can, just also thank you so much for the work you do. I know it's a very difficult process that parents end up in with the courts, so it's nice to have a friendly face and that you're volunteering your time. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and present a resolution now to the United Way for their 2-1-1 week, and also, we have Eric Gray, is that right? Eric Gray stands here. So let me go ahead and read this. It's the 2-1-1 week in Ventura County, and what it does is it recognizes this date during the week of February ninth, 2009. Whereas 2-1-1 is an easy-to-remember phone number that connects individuals with Health and Human Services Resources in Ventura County, and with approximately 3,300 nonprofit organizations in our county, plus scores of governmental agencies, finding help can be confusing and intimidating. Ventura County's 2-1-1 Call Center is staffed with trained specialists who quickly assess the caller's needs and refer them to help that they seek. Whereas 2-1-1 makes the entire network of Health and Human Services function more efficiently by reducing the number of misdirected calls and reducing public frustration with the difficulties of finding help. And whereas 2-1-1 offers information on a broad range of services, including earned income tax credits, rental assistance, mortgage loan assistance, food banks, health resources, childcare, after-school programs, elderly care, financial literacy, and job printing programs. And whereas 2-1-1 is a valuable community impact partnership of Interface Children Family Services, United Way of Ventura County, and First Five of Ventura County, this resolution is being presented on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, who takes great pleasure in proclaiming the week of February ninth, 2009, as 2-1-1 week in Ventura County. And I also just wanted to notice how invaluable 2-1-1 has turned out to be in emergency situations also, which isn't listed here. In the case of all the fires in San Diego, people had a phone number that they could call if they wanted to be able to provide resources, to get some volunteer offerings, and then also to find out what they can do. I don't remember how many calls, it's like over 10,000 calls all going to that 2-1-1 system. So you realize this is actually part of our public safety network, too, that we have this in the county, and anyone can just pick up and dial 2-1-1 and get referrals when they need help. And I'm going to come down and present it to you, Dave, and if you'd like to make some comments, please do.
Sure, great. There was 150,000 calls in San Diego County. So, good morning, Supervisors. Mr. Robinson, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Joining me are Amy Fonzo, our Vice President for Resource Development, and Eve Ledman, who conducts the county campaign for Ventura County United Way, and we're pleased to be here. I thought Eric Stranod from Interface was going to be with us today, but apparently he was, had something else that took his time. Appreciate having the opportunity to just say a couple of words about 2-1-1. This is our fourth anniversary. We're pleased and excited about that. We'll celebrate the anniversary tomorrow night with a reception at the Tupa Tower Club from 5:30 to 7:30, and hopefully you can find a way to squeeze it onto your busy calendars. A lot's been happening with 2-1-1 over the last four years. Just this past year in Ventura County alone, about 19,600 calls were fielded by the 2-1-1 Call Center in Camarillo. And to put that in a little bit of context... And to put that in a little bit of context, in 2008, in the state of California, 898,000 calls were fielded by two-on-one call centers in 19 counties. Tomorrow, we add number 20 and number 21, Monterey and Sonoma Counties will go live with two-on-one tomorrow. And to put it in a little bit further context, nationally in 2008, more than 14 million calls were fielded by two-on-one call centers in 38 states around the country. So I think Ventura County can be very proud that we have the two-on-one program in place that we have, is providing invaluable service to local residents, and will continue to do so and will continue to grow and prosper, I'm quite certain. And I just wanted to add, once again, our thanks to the Board of Supervisors for your very generous contribution of $35,000 in support of two-on-one in 2008, and to the Healthcare Agency for their support, $15,000 for the program. It's very important that we have that support. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for your leadership.
Fifty thousand. That's a lot of calls.
Supervisors, Eric goes and has a comment.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I just want to thank Dave Smith and United Way. I think it was last year, a couple of years ago, in the city of Oxnard, we brought the program, Don't Borrow Trouble, because of the foreclosures and because of the problems we're having with mortgages. And the Housing Authority from City of Oxnard, the DA's office, Board of Realtors, all got together to help, you know, our residents in Oxnard and Ventura County with their concerns. And two-on-one was used tremendously as a result of that. So I just want to thank Dave and United Way and all individuals that participated in that. And I think we continue with that, to that correct, Dave?
That is correct, Supervisor.
But I just want to thank you for the good work in United Way and two-on-one.
Thanks for your leadership on two-on-one, too. I'll get that going.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. Good luck.
Okay, we are now going to go back to item twenty-six.
Morning, Board members. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. Hopefully, this is the last board item regarding this subject that will be coming to your board from here on out. It'll be administratively implemented. This is the, we're requesting your board adopt the ordinance that will replace the current Public Administrator Guardian with the appointed Public Administrator Guardian. We are requesting that you receive, accept, and approve the resignation of Larry Matheny as the Public Administrator, and concur with the appointment of Barry Zimmerman, Director of Health and Human Services Agency, as the, excuse me, as the PAPG going forward, and also set the public hearing for February 24th at 3:15 to finalize this project. I want to take this opportunity to give special thanks to Linda Catherine Lee in our office, and Noel Claybaum, who really put this whole project together from an administrative and legal standpoint. They do, in my opinion, an excellent job. And of course, and the cooperation and make-it-happen attitude of Human Service Agency, the Treasury Tax Collector, and the Order of Controllers Office for their support also. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, and from here on out, it's up to Mr. Zimmerman and company to try to make this, to move this over to his office and go forward from here.
Great. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded, ready to vote.
Chair, that sounded like quite a handoff there, Barry.
And that motion passes unanimously with?
Title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura separating the Office of Public Administrator from the Office of Treasury Tax Collector, making the Office of Public Administrator appointed and including it from the classified service, and continuing the designation of the Public Administrator as ex officio public guardian.
That motion has passed, and we're at item twenty-eight. That's a second hearing on the 2009 memorandum of understanding.
Good morning, Chairman Boy, members of the board. Mrs. Robinson, I'm Shannon Leslie, CEO's Office Labor Relations. Before today, we have a second hearing and request for approval of the MOA with the VCSCOA.
Move the rest of the action. Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Motion carries. Well, fortunately, we're not too far behind our 10:30 item, 20 minutes behind, all right? And so we are ready for item twenty-three. Thank you very much. All right. What's that? Okay, we're, yes, go ahead. For the benefit of the public, in case somebody came in after the beginning of our meeting, because of our tight timeframes with the two supervisors having to leave at noon today, our public comment's going to be two minutes, so if you can do everything you can to try to adjust your comments down to two minutes, it'll help us out. Thank you.
I have a PowerPoint waiting for? Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Bennett and Supervisors. I'm Kara Thindley with the Planning Division.
Good morning.
We brought before you here a review of the county housing element, responses from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. As you recall, we, the housing element was adopted in July 2008 by your board, and we submitted the adopted version to the state for a 90-day mandatory review, and we received the comments in November. I know we have a limited amount of time, so I'm going to briefly go through some of the bigger issues, and then leave time for discussion and questions.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, the first two slides have to do with our progress towards the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or the RANA. In summary, they all have to do with meeting the lower-income housing needs. And the state did not accept our assumptions used to justify that they were affordable to lower-income households. And so we have not had a problem in meeting moderate, showing inventory, adequate inventory to accommodate these needs for moderate and upper-income inventory, but the lower-income categories remain to be an issue. Our response is that we want to revise the housing element to reflect actual rents and sales data, and this data is not very readily available, so we've had to do some additional research. And our preliminary research indicates that there are much less housing available in the lower-income categories. This second slide also indicates some of our assumptions in a more specific manner, where we were using second dwelling units to justify that we had the inventory. Again, we used assumptions based on some of the assumptions used for construction costs and loans that were not actual rents and sales, or well, not sales data, but rental data, and we assumed that these would be 100% affordable to lower-income families. And thus, we tried really hard to make this justified to meet the needs. And HCD obviously did not accept that assumption, and they want us to come back with actual rental data. In response, we have done some preliminary research, and we did a sampling with phone calls and from advertised units on Craigslist and in want ads, or sale ads in the newspaper, and found that approximately 63% are actually affordable to lower-income units. And because of this, and the fact that we use 100% in our assumptions, and there's 63% actual in our preliminary research, the county's housing needs or the RANA numbers cannot be met. The state law requires when you can't show an adequate inventory that you need to upzone sites and to 20 units to acre to meet this need. We intend to do additional research. Again, this is preliminary. We've been scrambling to try to get some information back to you so we can go forward with addressing HCD's concerns. However, we're not real optimistic that we're going to be able to show, or that it's going to forward the cause that we have adequate lower-income housing inventory, and just by nature of the policies in place in this county. In a little more detail, this is part of Exhibit Four, Table One, and this is a summary of the RANA needs. And the first row shows that the headings are the head income categories, and the first row shows our RANA needs for the planning period, which is 2006 to 2014. And then the second row shows the number of completions, and these numbers are revised based upon our preliminary research. And this table actually appears in the adopted housing element with different assumptions for which, for numbers for the lower-income category, based on the assumptions that HCD did not accept. So our remaining housing need is totals for the three lower-income categories, 440 units, 59 for moderate, and 381, and then a total of 880. This is also from Exhibit Four of your board letter. It's the third table, and this is just a summary of, shows a summary of where we're at, what our inventory is, the total being 440 units of lower income, and we have an inventory, we can demonstrate 250 availability for 254 units. However, if two pending farmworker housing projects are approved, we would have 361 units, which gives us a range of 79 to 186 deficit, and those are the ones we need to accommodate with the upzoning. The 79 would be what is required if the two projects are approved. One is scheduled to go to Planning Commission with, in March, for the Limoneira Farmworker Project between Santa Paula and Ventura, and the second one by CEDC is probably going to be heard towards the end of the year, because it needs to go through environmental review. So if those two are approved, our deficit would be 79 units. The second major issue we have is that we had Concerns Emergency Shelters and Transitional and Supportive Housing, and these are requirements from state law, or we commonly refer to it as SB2. The previous housing element was submitted prior to the deadline that triggered having to implement this. Although our previous element had provisions to accommodate this at a future date, we are now having to resubmit a draft, which triggers us having to comply with this requirement at this time. So in response, there's two ways we can deal with this. One is that state law says you need to provide a zone or zones, that you can provide an emergency shelter by right within the planning period to meet the identified need for homeless persons. And the second approach would be to negotiate an agreement with adjacent jurisdictions. And we're in preliminary discussions. Again, all of this is very preliminary, and we just wanted to report back to you to get direction. So we intend to continue having these discussions. However, in the meantime, we wanted to go forward with this rezoning to bring back to you in June what the language might look like, should we have to get to that point. There were several other issues that are mentioned in the HCD letter, but they're less controversial and less time-consuming to address. So those are discussed in your board letter, so I was going to, for the sake of keeping this brief, I was going to skip over those at this time, if that's okay with you. And then, finally, here's the big one, that has obviously stirred up a lot of controversy in the last couple of days. And I really want to emphasize that this, the list in Exhibit Three of potential sites, there's 22 sites listed there, and they're based on a very preliminary analysis that we went to to find something that might be considered to be rezoned. It's expected, excuse me, that some of the sites will have constraints that will cause their removal from the recommended list. And this, Exhibit Three, as you can see, has 22 potential sites. However, we've already removed eight from those from our recommendation due to LAFCO and obvious policy constraints. There were two letters submitted that you should have copies of, one from City of Camarillo and one from Thousand Oaks, where they are saying we don't think you should consider our sites, and those are some of the, three of those eight sites that we've already said we wouldn't recommend considering them. There's also a third site. It's listed as Site Number Three on Exhibit Three in Piru, that has an approved track map on it. And we would not recommend that site if the property owner is opposed to any changes, because he does have an entitlement on that. So that will most likely also be removed from consideration. Then here, we have, we intend to, with your direction, go forward and get deeper into the potential constraints and policy issues, and talk with the other agencies in the county and outside the county that would be concerned with these sites or might have issues with them, and really ferret out any potential fatal flaws. And then we intend to bring that back to you for direction in June on our final list of recommended sites. And also, along with this, since we're identifying sites, and we're specifically intending to put them in the housing element, as here's our inventory, we will most likely need to prepare an EIR. So that makes this work program a little bit lengthier. Okay, finally, to the work program, it's listed in Exhibit Two real generally. It includes the rezoning program, preparing ordinance amendments, preparing housing, associated housing element amendments, and then bring that all back to you as a draft in June, and then go forward based on your recommendation to prepare a supplemental EIR in this public review period, and then hearings by May, April and May 2010. Page two of Exhibit Two, I want to point out, has very specific tasks that are outlined for our work program that we're asking you to look at and give us recommendations to go forward on. So those are the, that's the detailed list. And then finally, this is my last slide, are the recommendations. The first three were included in your board letter. You have a memo in front of you from Kim Rodriguez, the Plan Director, indicating that we've added recommendation number four, and that simply, it refers to an anticipated budget adjustment that we neglected to include originally in order to accommodate other support agencies' technical expertise and time in helping us prepare the EIR. And we intend to, we're asking you to have us refine that scope and the estimate of the amount of time and cost that will be required for adjusting the budget and bringing that back to you in June as well. So as you can see, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and again, it's very preliminary, but we needed to bring something back to you to respond to the state, and we wanted to expedite that review, and that's why we're here today.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff before we go to our seven public speakers? All right, we'll go to our public speakers then, and our first public speaker is Kim Ulrich, our LAFCO, huh? Ulich, I'm sorry, Ulrich. I just was talking to a guy, Ramsey Ulrich, last night.
It's an easy one to mispronounce. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. I want to begin this morning by complimenting county planning staff's efforts toward initiating the process to update the county housing element. You know, we LAFCO staff certainly appreciate how challenging and complex any housing element update can be, and I think that your staff has done an excellent job. And I think that your staff has done an excellent job despite rather tight timing and resource constraints. I'm here this morning to make you aware of a number of corrections and clarifications that need to be made to your Exhibit 3 of your board letter. That's titled Potential Sites for Rezoning to 20 Dwelling Units Per Acre. And more specifically, we would like to offer corrections that pertain to column, the column in Exhibit 3 titled LAFCO Policy Conflict. We've also prepared a table that clarifies our corrections, and we're hereby submitting On page 8 of your board letter, staff is recommending that at least the first 14 sites on the list, meaning Exhibit 3, be evaluated in a supplemental environmental impact report and that the first 14 sites represent all sites that do not, upon initial review, have an inherent conflict with LAFCO policy. However, based on LAFCO staff's analysis, we do not concur with this determination. Among the first 14 sites listed on Exhibit 3, we find that eight of those sites would indeed conflict with LAFCO policy pertaining to our preference for annexation to a city whenever possible. In other words, eight of those no designations on the LAFCO Policy Conflict column should be changed to a yes. Rezoning any of these eight sites may not achieve the county's desired purpose, which is to get rent a credit for any housing units built because they would most likely need to be annexed to a city in order to receive urban services. In addition, three of the other 14 top sites require further analysis to determine whether LAFCO policies would provide for approval for a contract for extension of city services via an out-of-agency service agreement in lieu of an annexation. Now with regard to sites numbers 15 through 22, we are unable to determine the basis for six of the eight determinations that the sites would inherently conflict with LAFCO's policy preference for annexation to a city. However, that being said, further analysis would be necessary to determine whether there are conflicts with any other LAFCO policies.
And we're really fighting on our comments, so can you wrap it up?
Yes, I'll definitely wrap it up. In the interest of time, I'll make myself available to meet with your staff after the meeting in order to provide additional clarifications. And to conclude, I'd like to emphasize that LAFCO staff can serve as a real resource to county staff to provide the latest information about public service providers and LAFCO policies. We're always happy to assist in whatever way we can. And I therefore request that your board encourage your staff to consult with LAFCO staff in the future. Anytime a pending board matter might be affected by LAFCO policies. And lastly, with regard to today's recommendation, we request that your board direct staff to go back to work with LAFCO staff to select the most feasible sites to evaluate in a supplemental EIR for possible rezoning to 20 dwelling units.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Charles Rogers. On deck is Michael Rolls. If Michael Rolls would move down to the front row, we would appreciate it so that he could, oh, you're pretty close.
Good morning, Chairman Bennett, Board members, and Mrs. Robinson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. This is the first time that I've had a chance to speak to this specific issue. For some reason, neither LAFCO nor your staff invited me to come in prior to talk about my property and how I felt about the issue at hand. Having said that, let me say I'm here to speak in favor of the recommended zone change to a minimum of 20 residential units per acre is a good use for my land.
Which property are you talking about, sir?
Okay, I'm talking about specifically, on your Exhibit 3, it would be Site 17.
Thank you.
In fact, one of those that, for some reason, shows a conflict with LAFCO, which I disagree with. I actually own two adjoining parcels of land in Saticoy totaling 1.99 acres. The 16 paper lots on my larger parcel were created when Saticoy became a township in the late 1800s. You can refer to the township map that I provided for you. Today, even with the local economy severely depressed, we are still in desperate need of affordable farm labor housing. I want to have a small part in alleviating this housing shortage by building as many units as possible on my property. Frankly, I see no reason to spend two years and thousands of tax dollars on an EIR when a negative declaration should be sufficient. With your support, authorizing fast-tracking by planning, I could have the units built and occupied in two years instead of the four-plus years it will take under the proposed plan before you today. If you do not concur, however, I am respectfully requesting that you include my property with the first 14 on the list, now to be modified, to be initially evaluated in the supplemental EIR. Contrary to staff opinion, I see no conflict with LAFCO's policy. To the contrary, the development of my property is in direct conformance with LAFCO's mandate.
Sir, your time is up. Could you wrap it up, please?
Well, okay, I'll do it faster. To ensure the orderly development and expansion of existing communities. As you can see on the aerial photo, my property and those of my neighbors on either side are completely surrounded by development. The improvement of my property is an example of orderly development. We are not enlarging the community. We're simply increasing the density on property already zoned multifamily. This parcel is a classic example of infill property. It benefits no one to leave the parcel vacant. All utilities already exist in the adjoining streets, and two signalized intersections provide easy access to Highway 118. Saticoy is located at the center of our farming industry. It will be a short commute to the most distant farm.
Thank you very much. I think we essentially have your letter here. And for the benefit of everybody, we're trying to make it two minutes, so if you'll get to the essence of your comments, we will appreciate it. Thank you, sir. And we do have a copy of your letter right here in front of us. All right. Our next speaker, Michael Rolls.
Good morning. Supervisor Boye touched on an issue that ties to this but doesn't tie to it, and Supervisor Long and her involvement with PHAC in terms of the water issue, and I don't know how it ties to LAFCO and such. But out of services, out of city, or the city servicing a county area, which we've gone through in the City of Camarillo, saying we're not going to service the prison. Well, my parcel is number 15 on your list and is not in your original 14. Currently, you are using that property to meet your needs for your housing element. That property cannot get water through the City of Ventura. It is allowed one three-quarter inch water meter for 3.68 acres. As you submit it now to, and has you been using it, it's unavailable to be developed. So what you're submitting has no reality. I think you need to look at all the policies, how they tie together. And I know my, this policy, my property is number 15 relative to the 14 that are originally addressed, but maybe it should be totally dropped from your housing element and the zoning reviewed to put a product on there that could benefit the county in terms of tax dollars and not just sit there vacant to meet some housing element requirement that doesn't help any of us. It doesn't give us jobs. It doesn't give us, you know, what we need for small business today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Eileen McCarthy and on deck Barbara Macri Ortiz.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, Vice Chair Long, members of the Board of Supervisors, and Ms. Robinson. My name is Eileen McCarthy. I'm a staff attorney with California Rural Legal Assistance, speaking today on behalf of Sierra LA's lower-income client who is in need of affordable and adequately-sized housing in the County of Ventura. We're responding to the county's notice for comment as to item number 29. While staff's recommendations with regard to the county's housing element represent significant progress, unfortunately, the timeline that is described in Exhibit 2 would result in the county's remaining out of compliance with state housing element law as well as both state and federal fair housing law for at least another year and a half. We understand that county staff is concerned that environmental review be completed prior to the rezoning of the sites to higher density and that the adoption of the housing element not take place until that's occurred. However, it is the case that the housing element is always a project under SEQA, whether or not it includes a zoning program, and is therefore always subject to some sort of environmental review. The question is whether the county's housing element could contain a program that commits the county to rezoning land sufficient to meet the county's remaining RENA need without necessarily identifying specific parcels. You've heard testimony already today as to back and forth, the negative and positive as to different sites that exist. We think that the county could withstand an environmental challenge if the sites aren't listed specifically, if the program simply commits to doing it with the understanding that environmental review will begin so that before those properties are rezoned, there is in fact, there has been in fact, an environmental analysis of the properties. Frankly, the frustration that Sierra LA faces on behalf of its client in the county is the same frustration that we're facing in every single jurisdiction that we are commenting on behalf of our clients. I just had an aisle conversation with the representative from LAFCO about the notion that if in fact land is annexed, once the county has approved that land, the city that's annexing could be told by LAFCO, "You can only do that if you take on some of the county's RENA need." We faced this, a similar situation in Orange County. Unfortunately, there, the county didn't choose to pursue that route, but it's something that could be done. Because I will tell you, in every single jurisdiction, none of the elements are in compliance. I've commented extensively on many. The cities are not moving to embrace affordable housing. With all due respect, I understand Supervisor Saragosa that Oxnard did make significant progress, but as we speak, they don't even have to have a draft available. So I would urge, if there's something that needs to be worked out, I think the representative from LAFCO thinks that there needs to be other language worked out, we're willing to work with county council and staff as to language for a program that essentially puts a timeline so that you're moving sooner, much sooner than the summer of next year to adopt your housing element.
Thank you for condensing your comments and for your always rapid pace in life. Barbara Macri Ortiz, please.
Good morning, Chair Bennett and council members, and greetings and congratulations to our new supervisor from Oxnard, Supervisor Saragosa. Real quick, I want to really start by saying it's been very refreshing and invigorating to see the work that the staff has done. It is a real pleasure to see when government actually embraces its responsibilities under state law, especially housing law, because it is such a difficult and political issue, that it's nice to see the staff doing their job to the best of their ability and capacity. I know you're between a rock and a hard place. I had a conversation with your counsel in Dash. I've also been on the phone with people from HCD. People look at it from different contexts. I think that Ms. McCarthy is also correct in terms of the analysis, and it's a question of which way you want to go. What I think needs to be made very, very clear is that by taking, as long as it's proposed to take, to get a housing element compliance, you are basically foreclosing the possibility of this jurisdiction receiving any Prop 1(c) funds. And probably by the time that you finally get a housing element compliance, those funds will probably have dried up. So that's where the rubber meets the road in terms of what you have to do and how you have to do it, when you do it. If you are able to get a housing element, even if it's in conditional compliance, I have this verified by HCD, that if you went ahead on the early end and got your housing element and they conditionally approved it, that approval would still be good for the Prop 1(c) funds. So I think that's really your issue. I know it's, as a lawyer, you know, it's always best to have your best facts to make your law. I support the work plan. And I would just say with respect to Program 3.3.3-58, the zoning and general plan amendment for the farmworker parcels of less than 40 acres, that you move, you know, concurrently, get the environmental out of the way, and then please move forward with that, especially if the housing element gets into a quagmire of what are we going to do? Let's move forward with that and at least give us that relief because we've been waiting for that for quite a long time. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Osario Lopez, followed by Serinder Sumner and Supervisor Long.
Good morning, the Board of Supervisors. My name is Arsenio, and I want to use this opportunity to talk about the housing needs for farmworkers and low-income families. On behalf of Arrio and Island Acres communities, I want to ask you to assist in the development of adequate housing, adequate housing to meet the needs of extremely low, very low, and moderate household in Arrio and Island Acres. For the last few years, these unincorporated communities have been forgotten, and so for the poor families that live there. Families that work hard and that are part of the economics of this county should not be in the shadow because they are as human as those who live at the river parks areas. We believe that if you support what the HCD asks for, will bring at least a hope for the farmworkers and low-income families that lives in unincorporated communities such as Arrio and Island Acres. Hope that some way, someday, they will be able to pay for a home or apartment to live with their families and not have to share with two or more families. They have to share because their income is not enough to pay for a rent of $1,300 or $1,500 for an apartment with two bedrooms. So I'm encouraging you all to think for the wellness of this community and support what HCD has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker, Serinder Sumner, and on deck, Nicole Norio.
Good morning.
Norio. Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I will take your time a little bit regarding number 16 parcel that we own. And my family is in grocery retail business, and we, I put about 11 neighborhood markets in Ventura County and on Avenue and everywhere. Well, on this parcel, when I bought this, on number 16, there was a business, and we have the same idea to put some low-income houses back there and have that front because that is on the busiest highway of Ventura County. My parcel is on Los Angeles Avenue. The front is about 257 feet with the Los Angeles Avenue. And I have two questions in that. Number one, that's very good to put low-income houses there. I really like it. But to put low-income houses on a highway, we have hundreds of thousands of cars passing by every day, it is dangerous. And I will request, if possible, because we are there still, when I bought that, it was C2, and now the zone is changed, if you can think about keeping one-third or little part front as a commercial and mixed-use kind of thing, and we would like to put low-income houses back there according to the will and rules of our county. And second thing is, if we try to do something or plan to do something or try to work out on that parcel, we don't have water anyways. You know, the city won't let us use water. And these are the two things that I was interested in sharing with. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for condensing your comments. Our next speaker, Nicole Norio, Nori, there you are. And then on deck, Susan Berry.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. I'm here to represent Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. I'm a project manager with Cabrillo. And we really would like to acknowledge staff and all their hard work with this housing element. We know it's a big undertaking. We also would like to acknowledge the county because we truly feel that it has been a public process. And since last year, we have been given the opportunity to comment, and we feel that staff has listened. We support the recommendations and think the county and staff has made headway in addressing the public's concerns. Our only concern that we do have is with regards to the timeline because as Barbara and Eileen pointed out, that certain programs for HCD funding and Eileen pointed out, that certain programs for HCD funding, as they become more and more competitive, there's limited amount of funds, and some of them have imposed requirements such as they need to have a housing element that's in compliance in order to be awarded the competitive points. So we really would like to stress that we encourage the county to bring the housing element into compliance as soon as possible, so that nonprofits such as CEDC and other nonprofits in the area do have access to these funds and aren't shut out from accessing the funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker, Susan Berry.
Hello, board members. I serve an amateur at this, but I have not heard anybody speak for the American public. Citizens will have to endure the additional traffic into our area, our freeways, the additional crime, the additional tax burden, whether anyone wants to admit that side of the story. I will. I'm witness. I'm a third-generation native California, native American citizen in the state of California, and I have watched it deteriorate because of actions such as this. And it is destroyed. My life personally, in certain instances, my grandparents migrated legally, my mother and uncles worked in the fields, they lived in Saticoy. Okay, they worked hard. But now the people coming over here who are working these jobs, it seems like an endless, endless trail. It seems like it's never going to end. You accommodate them with this, you're going to have to accommodate them with something else down the line, similar. Van Nuys between Thousand Oaks, need I remind you, was supposed to be an open, all-green space. That has been concreted over in times that I remember. I'm 53 years old, I'm not that old. I remember living a stone's throw away from City Hall in Los Angeles. Look how quickly that city was paved over. You add 20 houses, and I don't care if you don't want to live two families to a house, you still will, they still will, because that's the way their culture has, that's how they are. I'm not saying anything against, I'm not anti-immigrant, I'm anti-illegal immigrant, and that's who a lot of these people end up being in those homes, that's who a lot of these people end up us having to afford.
Ma'am, you'll have to wrap up, please. Great.
Thank you very much. I hope you consider that, and of course, environmental issues, the traffic flow. I live in Ojai, and it has increased tremendously. You put more houses in Saticoy, we'll have more traffic up there.
That ends our, that ends our public comments.
I'm a American citizen.
And now we're done with public testimony, we're ready for, ma'am, thank you, we have a meeting in progress now. Go ahead, we're ready for public comments. I'm sorry, board, comments or questions? Always nice to end on a rousing note here.
There were two items, or three items, excuse me, that were listed for postponing in order that we can do the other ones sooner. And of those three items, I note that two of them actually would be fees to the county to help pay for more of these kind of affordable housing sites. So my thought was that it would be helpful to move those two forward, particularly since we may be able to incorporate the cost of the staff work into the fee. If you could address that.
First of all, quite honestly, we do not have the staff to be able to do all of that and those two programs, in addition to the ones that are necessary to get our housing element and these other programs to the point of decision. The other issue with regard to fee offset, although there is the possibility that we could meld into the fees administrative costs, that's going to be highly controversial, and even if we did, we would have to amortize those costs over about a 10-year period of time, at least, that's what I've heard in other jurisdictions. So we would have to expend the money now, and then hope to recover it over 10 years. And that's if, because that's on top of a very expensive fee already. That's a political decision as to whether or not the board would want to do that.
And so would the bottom line be here that even if you had the money to do it, you don't have the staffing to do it, so that we're at that kind of situation in the planning department now?
Correct.
Okay, because I know we've been in different situations over the last few years, but that's where we are now. Thank you.
Other items? Supervisor Wong.
Well, I appreciate the public comments today. This is very challenging for us, and I certainly would agree that we should have communications with the LAFCO executive officer and planning to, putting up this list obviously has brought on some other concerns and challenges, and I'd like to be sure that whenever we issue a list like this, that it, one, be as accurate as possible with communication and work done on it, and I'll just let that be said. The other concern raised, and I too have it, is the timeline, and I know we have staffing constraints, but if we are at risk with 1C funds, if we are at risk of our good folks who do the work in trying to provide housing, affordable housing in the ground, of them qualifying for award points, we should set some priority to that. And I frankly don't know where 1C is, frankly, with all of the issues related to the state fiscal crisis, whether we'll ever see that money move quickly at any point, but we should be ready when it does. I think the issues, the work done by staff has been very good, and I certainly would concur that we move ahead with getting our housing element adopted, and trying to look how we can expedite that, and where we have perhaps going to that list where you have willing property owners and issues that can be resolved as to what other extraneous issues there might be with it, to identify those and move to expedite those. The area of concern with the emergency shelters transitional supportive housing under SB2 guidelines, those are as important in this commitment on the housing element as the others. I read staff's comments about emergency shelters should be by areas where folks have access to public services, transportation, jobs, generally those things that you find within our urban cores. So to look at the proposed emergency shelter by right in the CPD zone, and you're proposing to get back to us in June on this, and I guess my question on that is, that as opposed to a planned development zone, any difference in whether that helps us to move that one along? I just think these need to be closer to cities.
Well, we don't have a planned development zone per se, and the question is, do we create a special zone that would accommodate just this type of use, or do we use our existing zones? Your board, this is really direction to us to go study further. We may actually come back with further constraints and standards, and for instance, we may be recommending only within a city sphere of influence. Quite honestly, we haven't studied this issue in enough detail. We'd have to inventory all the potential sites in the county and see, do they make sense? And if they don't make sense, we'll be coming back with some very specific recommendations in June as how you would structure that ordinance to be much more limited.
Okay, okay, that would be, I think, preferred direction, that it be in the closest, as closest to the cities as we get them for the service connections, just as we are interested in doing the same with farmworker housing.
Supervisor Saragosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to thank the planning director and staff. This is a very complicated issue with many details that include a lot of complex and contradictory laws, regulations, and so forth, and practices. The housing element is mandatory by the state of California, and it says that we must update our housing plan. Some of the concerns that I have is what Kim mentioned from LAFCO. You know that some of the items do require LAFCO review. And the question I have is that LAFCO review because they're contiguous to the cities, because they need sewer, and also water services. I'd like to hear from Kim regarding that.
There in our site characteristics column in the table that we presented, anywhere where it says that the site abuts a city, that would trigger our least local policy preference for annexation, because of course, annexation is only possible when the site is contiguous to a city boundary. So where it's possible, i.e. contiguous, annexation would be preferred to this alternative, which is LAFCO review and approval of a contract for service between the city and a property owner.
So with that in mind, I think that our staff needs to work with LAFCO, you know, to make sure we're on the same page on this element. And I do agree with the staff's recommendation, you know, so we can get going in this element, then subject to working with LAFCO and subject to other concerns that were mentioned today.
Great, thank you. Let's see, any other comments? I have a few comments, and then I'd just like to try and hand in a motion to move things forward. And one is, I note that in the PowerPoint, we should have the slides here, the PowerPoint staff said that there are 22 potential sites, 14 sites recommended for further evaluation. Final recommendations will be brought back for direction. I think what we're hearing is, there's some work that needs to be done there. So rather than trying to micromanage the changes here, I think we direct staff to work with this, talk with LAFCO, you know, take in the benefits of the testimony that we've had here as staff gets ready to come back. The second thing that I'd like to do, and my next two items would be sort of specific amendments to the staff's recommended action. This one is, we have these 20 units per acre, and we have this tremendous shortage in low-income housing, but we don't, there's no discussion here about how we could be sure that if we do this zoning, it's actually going to give us the low-income housing. And what I'd like to ask is that as staff comes back with this, they come back with whatever assurances they can create to make sure that if we go to this trouble and we rezone for this reason, we actually are going to get housing that is affordable to low-income residents. So that would be one of the modifications I'd like to make to the motion. My motion would be to accept staff's recommendation with that modification, and specifically, there was the conversation between Mr. Smith and Supervisor Wong, but I would like to have staff focus their review, because you said, you know, places where it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to put emergency shelters out away from the urban areas, so I would like to have staff limit and focus its view for the emergency shelters in the CPD zone in city spheres, all right, and see what that produces for us as that comes back. So those would be my modifications to a motion that we approve staff's recommendation with those modifications. So certainly.
Just real quick, you talked about trying to make sure that if we approved this zoning, that we would get the housing. So what kind of guarantee are you trying to get? I mean, like the property owner will do it, or something like that?
I don't know what kind of guarantees are legal. I don't know what can be done, so I'm just throwing the challenge out to our staff, to the extent that they can find, working with county council, a language that can be put in here to make sure that we don't do this rezoning to 20 units per acre and then turn around and have it, you know, be taken advantage of, and we only get two or three low-income housing units out of it and stuff. But I don't have anything specific in mind as a solution, I just ask them to work with county council, work with our planning experts, to see if there is anything that they can identify that would assure as much as possible.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk to the people and see what they'd want to do with their land and to get help through that process.
And even if you had a verbal commitment from somebody, you might need to have something legal in case there's a change of ownership or whatever, these documents could last for many years.
Right, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
And then just to look at the reality of some of the sites, I note from a letter that we received, one's already under construction for a single-family home, so I think that has to come off the list, among others. So I think we need to look at the realistic nature of some of these, if they're 15% slow, you know, we can't be putting high density on a 15% slow.
Mr. Chair, were you talking about deep restrictions or recommendations?
I don't have a single fact in mind or process of mind, I just would like to see if we can accomplish the concept.
But that could...
If you, as a real estate professional, think that's what...
Normally, that would happen, yes.
Great, good, good, right, all right. So I can be clear, the staff's recommended actions include, you know, looking at these 14 sites, but reviewing, you know, them as they go forward, right? There were a top 14 sites here that staff's currently doing their initial review of. So anyway, Roberta, can you give me an electronic thing so I can make that as a motion? Thank you, all right. She Who Must Be Obeyed has allowed us to make a motion here. Looking for a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Supervisor Saragosa. Are we ready to vote on the motion, or is there any other comments? I think we're ready to vote. Thank you, everybody, for the testimony. I think we picked up some good pieces of suggestions and information here today in terms of moving forward. I'm going to hold off on the 11 o'clock budget and try to get to staff items here. My apologies to staff that's been sitting out there for a while, but we're at item 31, healthcare agency. Yeah, here we go.
Good morning, Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson.
Could I have some help from the audience? We're on a timeframe, if people could step outside for their conversations? Thank you.
Melanie Roy from the Behavior Health Department. Item 31, request your approval to authorize a first amendment with Silmar Health and Rehab Center to increase our contract with them by $800,000. There are no other rate modifications or substantive changes. And recommendation two, request your approval for us to increase our contract with Milhouse Children's Services by $75,200. This is a residential treatment facility for children. If you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Supervisor Parks. All right, that's seconded, and we're ready to vote then. Thank you very much. I'm sorry you had to wait. We're at item 32.
Thank you.
Also, healthcare agency.
Good morning, Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. My name's Patty Chan, I'm a Division Manager of Public Health. The item before you is to request acceptance of $276,000 additional dollars for which is Women, Infant, and Children's Nutrition Program. These funds would be to help our additional impact of our families in the county.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions? Moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. We didn't get a chance to vote there, there we go. All right, and that motion passes. We're at item 33, and that's receive and file the auditor's report on county treasurer.
Chair Bennett, members of the board, if you have any questions.
Great, do we have any questions for the auditor? We're ready for, moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 34, I'm recommending that we reappoint Guian Brooking to the Mental Health Board. Oh, I have a card on this. She Who Must Be Obeyed needs a little help here, I see, huh? Okay, so we have no card on this? Great, been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote.
Just comment that Guian's been a great person to have on the board.
Great, thank you. And we are at item 35, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This is to request a letter to the governor to oppose his desire to redirect the... And in that law, it specifically says that you can't take those funds and use them for other purposes. So this is something that the voters approved, and it was specifically written that you can't take the funds and use them for other purposes. And here you have a recommendation by the governor to do that. So far, $13.6 million has been brought in this year in the Mental Health Services Act and for Ventura County behavioral health programs. It would be a significant impact to that department, particularly in lieu of the also other funding cuts that are happening in that department. So I would ask that we go ahead and approve this letter that's attached. And to me, it just also comes to having the trust with the voters. We have, you know, when we put something out there, we tell voters how funds are going to be used, and then we redirect them when they're not supposed to be redirected. I think that really hurts the trust of voters. So I would move that we go ahead and send this letter. Oh, after the card. I withdraw my motion.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Boach, and I'm a member of the Mental Health Board, and I just urge you to approve this letter unanimously to be sent to the governor. All the reasons are stated in the letter. Certainly, we do need to keep those funds secure, and we don't need them to plan it. It would be a serious loss to our county if that's the way we direct it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. So we need to, we have a motion. There we go, there's a second, and we're ready to vote. For the benefit of the press, while we're waiting for the vote, I'll point out that our CEO does have a PowerPoint presentation here, and we'll try to squeeze that in before we leave. And you can also pick a copy of this up if you need it. But there are some things about the state budget crisis that the CEO would like to talk to us about. But before we go to that, we're not quite ready to go to that item. We have that passed unanimously, thank you very much. We also have Supervisor Foy, would you mind if I just did 37 first and then came back to yours, 36? Could we do 37, please? And that's authorization of Public Works Agency Transportation Department. Does anybody here for that? There you are. Butch?
I'll for Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, Ms. Robinson, I'll forego my two hours of comments and just ask if there's any questions.
Well, how long did it take to grow that? Yeah, yeah.
It's been about four and a half weeks.
You know, if you stood just about an inch closer to the razor, you'd get it all off, you know, how they used to say it and stuff. All right, thank you very much, we're ready for a motion. Item 38, he does, he does, yeah, small Johnny Johnson.
A little bit rounded.
We're ready for a motion on item 39 before we get a lawsuit for Mr. Brett for harassment. Been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. And that item passes. 38's been pulled. And so we are, Supervisor...
Sure.
Sure, we'll move the correspondence agenda and then we'll go back.
Motion to receive and file correspondence.
Second, we're ready to vote. What am I missing? We've got all of you folks back there for, what are you here for?
Deferrals.
For the budget item?
For the budget deferral.
Oh, okay, great. I kept thinking there's something else in there. We got this staff in there, right? Thank you. All righty, and that motion passes to receive the correspondence agenda now. Supervisor Foy.
Thanks, sir. This is in support of AB 102. This bill will require the Director of Parks and Recreation to establish a Santa Susana State Park Advisory Committee no later than January 1st. And the committee would advise state parks to help planning interim permanent land use of the former Santa Susana lab, the Rocket Island site. And the intended legislation provides that the park and recreational opportunities for Ventura and LA regions develop the Santa Susana Field Directory into a state park. You know, it's because it's important to establish the vision of the property, that's why it's important that we do this once the cleanup is complete. And the most important part is that this cleanup does get done, as we heard some other people make comments on that, so we want to make sure that's done. The other part with this is the site plays a pivotal role in the preservation of critical habitat, wildlife corridors too, up there. There's that road, road horses up there, it's a beautiful area. So anyway, this also provides a special, creates a diverse park, wildlife habitat protection. There's so much to it. Recreation, education, visitors, historical and education prevention measures to avoid contamination to this land. I think that's important. The bill also prohibits transfer of the site until all contamination has been cleaned. So I think that's part of what this whole thing does. So the advisory committee will identify the recommendations of the director for future plans on this site. I think the other part about it's important, the director will appoint advisory committee, including members representing entities such as environmental, recreational, historical, reservation, cultural organization, museum, educational institutions, labor groups. I mean, so it's a wide ride of people to do this. This is an important thing, that once we've got this thing cleaned up, it could be a great site for future use, so.
Thank you very much.
No questions.
And do we have any cards on this?
No, but we are passing out two letters that were received just recently from Supervisor Parks' office that were just brought in.
Supervisor Parks, I see you have your light on.
Yeah, I like the vision of it all being cleaned up and it becoming a park. And little kids can go rolling and playing in it and all that. But at this point, it's probably one of the hot, most contaminated sites in the nation, looking at radioactive waste on the property. They've already found radium, cesium-137, stauntium-90. We also know that half a million gallons of TCE were dumped on the site per chloride, extremely contaminated site. And we know that they have not finished assessing what the limits of the contamination are. They're still trying to determine the full amount of the contamination. They can't even come up with agreement how to deal with the water that every time it rains washes off and contains those contaminants and goes off-site. A lot of difficulty with this. The first thing they have to do is determine what's the extent of contamination. Then they have to come up with a plan on how to remove the contamination. And personally, I don't know if they can remove the contamination, because in doing so, it will require a lot of grading, and then you're going to be having dust in the air, and that potential is, can be quite significant on people's health, if they can clean it up. I think the speaker was saying they can't begin until about 2017. Part of the legislation, the bill, also includes a desire to keep the equipment on-site as a monument. And I'm thinking, oh, what equipment? You want the melted down, the reactor that melted down, is that the equipment on-site? Is it the, you know, the detention base? It's like, why would you want to keep any of that there as a monument? So my main concern is that this is premature. Like I said, the vision's nice, but the idea of taking an incredibly contaminated site and moving forward with a bill to make an advisory committee to look at having the land turned over to a park, to me is at least a decade, if not several decades away, because as Supervisor Foy said, the most important thing is getting this site cleaned up. And I think as a board, we will send a message to the state and the federal government that this is our priority. You know, who owns the land, whether it becomes public or not, that all is secondary to getting this site cleaned up. Right now, it's under Boeing's ostriches, they own it, they need to clean it up, and I personally, at this time, can't support it. But I would hope that it comes back after it's all cleaned up, if that date happens, and then talk about making it into a park. I did, actually, and I don't mean to delay, because I know we're in a kind of a rush here, but...
We're not in a rush, I think a couple of supervisors are.
Okay. But I did, back five years ago, I wrote an editorial, and I just highlighted the last line of it, because it was brought up, I think Supervisor Michaels was looking at the idea of making this into a park. And my bottom line, which is the last sentence of this, is discussions of turning the land over for parkland must not be broached until the extent of the pollution is fully documented and the land is cleaned up. And to tell you the truth, I still believe, at this point, I can't support the motion.
Let me just make a quick comment. I think that, I understand, I think the cleanup is the most important, there's no question about it. I think, though, by moving forward and making this the opportunity to be a park, and you have a lot of people involved, you also open up the opportunity for the public to see, wow, there's two or 3,000 acres that we could get hold of, there's going to be a whole lot more pressure brought. As you know, there's a group of people that have pressure, but when you get out in the ex, part of a bigger extents of the community, they don't look at it as anything, you know, some companies having to fix their problem. But if we come back and say that, hold it, if we have this opportunity to be a park, we have the opportunity to get the whole public saying, we want that two or 3,000 acres up there, we want the opportunity, we want to put public pressure to make this thing happen. And I think Boeing, as a big public company, would like to, you know, see this thing pressure go away at some point, and we understand that it's expensive for them, but they're going to have to do something, they're going to have to move forward. I would hate to see us delay that pressure, because once it was the idea that it can be given to the public, I think that gives us that opportunity to pressure, because nothing's going to happen here, like Supervisor Parks said, until it's cleaned up. Nothing's going to happen at all. Let's take advantage and add maybe another layer of pressure on top of that if possible.
If I might, a fear that I have heard from the folks that have been fighting to get this cleaned up, and we're talking, you know, cancer survivors, employees that are families of employees who have died, and mothers of children with retinoblastoma and all, what I'm hearing from them is that they fought and they got the help of Senator Kuhl, and a bill was made to require it to be cleaned up to the highest standards. The highest standards means, I think it's like rural agriculture, you could put a house there, you could live on it. A less high standard is park. And so what I've heard from these folks is the concern that if it is pushed first and foremost as a park instead of this cleanup, that at a later time, there will be an effort to reduce that high level that they have fought so hard to get, because it would make, you know, there'd be more effort to make it into a park and allow lesser cleanup standards. So that is something that I've been hearing too. So in that regard too, I'd be a little bit concerned, moving forward, getting a big base of support for a park when it could lead to reduction in standards, and most all, change the focus from cleaning it up to making it into a park.
I think the opportunity of the park still brings up that issue of the public, and if somebody wanted to lower standards, I think the public would be very against that, since we already had a standard where they're at. I'd hate to stop this movement because of something that possibly might happen, a little trace of that, but I'd rather bring it to as much of the awareness of the public on both sides of the county line, and try to make those people put the pressure and keep moving. And I think that's the way to go.
I know we're cutting it close time-wise here. I'll just very quickly weigh in. I think it's a laudable goal to try to turn this into a park. I'm just not confident yet that I understand all the dynamics of having to be a park, getting designated as a park, and then whether it still will be cleaned up to the highest standard. So I'm interested. And it's not that I suspect or doubt or anything else, I just, with the legislation, the way I read it and the dynamics, I'm not ready to sign off on that. So from my position, I hope it goes forward, I hope it becomes a park someday, but I'm not ready to sign off on the Smythe legislation at this point in time because of the potential that it may be somehow compromise the standards that are used for the cleanup. Do we have any other comments before we deal with the motion?
I'll just comment, I think it's premature. I think that the point that you're going to have a advisory committee established, it can be established overnight, if there's that much commitment and excitement in the community to do so. And I think the issues raises to the, keeping the focus, keeping the eye on the ball, to get the site cleaned up first should be the premier issue. So I think it's premature, and I think that at some point down the road, there will be a park advisory committee. But to have it set to go for January 1st, 2012, knowing that the cleanup, I think will go well beyond that period of time, so I think it's premature.
All right, since we see it nothing, how about we just pull this off?
Okay.
Why don't I just make a motion to remove this from our calendar day?
All right, Supervisor Foy is making a motion to remove this from the, or just pull this item?
Pull this, yeah, since people want to bring it back later after cleanup, so.
I'll second the pulling of it.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to pull this item, we're ready to vote. And we're ready to leave Supervisor Wong, and...
What's that? Do we have to get your computer, people here?
There we go. All right. Could I suggest, I think it's a very valuable budget presentation, but I think we have to go. And so why don't we suggest that, since you're the chair, you're the vice chair, walking out, we need somebody to just close up this meeting here and stuff, so. What's that? All right, okay, all right. I think you've got to make that, all right?
Supervisor Parks will be designated to close the meeting because we have to leave.
We're going to leave, the chair and the vice chair, so those two just nominated Linda to finish up the meeting, right? I thought Zaragosa might really like being in a review and all that other stuff. So you're in the chair for this final item.
I believe we were at the agenda item to do the budget report, and the CEO, Marty Robinson, would you like to take that one on?
Yes, I would. You know, we have talked about the state deferral process previously, so I will just take a few minutes on this slide presentation. This is a presentation that the counties are doing all over the state to talk about what some of the issues are and to clarify that. Roberta, I'm going to need to have the slide program come up, and I'm going to need a clicker. Technical term. So as you know, the state has a cash crisis. Your board dealt with earlier today a move amongst some of the other counties to file a lawsuit with the controller because of the cash crisis. It basically means that during this point in time, let's get this right, yeah, okay, during this point in time, the state's running out of money, the controller has indicated that they will not be paying, they're deferring payments to some of the programs that we operate. And because there is no budget in place, the state, of course, cannot borrow to cover their cash shortfall. This slide shows the statewide property tax growth and what is happening and what is being projected, and I don't think you can see the very bottom line there on the red background, but that minus 6.14%, is in 2009. And as I've indicated to the board last week, our projection for property tax increases for next year has dropped to zero. So we're not in as bad a shape at this point in time as the rest of the state, or as the state in its, you know, as a group, but we are certainly going to be having less revenue to confront the future. We still do not know all of the areas in which the state will hold funds. These are some of the places that the state has made deferrals in previous years. We have also been talking with Mr. Zimmerman about the way that some local funds and state funds are bundled into programs. So we actually expect the numbers that we have to grow about what will be deferred. And so on the next page, you will see our current estimates about seven months' deferral, because now we're really moving into, if the state adopts a budget, so we have the state controller currently this year making deferrals based on him not having cash, but most of the dialogue around the budget is a seven-month deferral of payments to county governments. And once that's adopted in the budget, it's my understanding that the only basis for suing the controller at this point in time is that there is an adopted budget that basically includes money to pay us, even though he doesn't have the cash. And once that's adopted in the budget, it's my understanding that the only basis for suing the controller at this point in time is that there is an adopted budget that basically includes money to pay us, even though he doesn't have the cash. At the point the state adopts a budget, that's not going to be the situation. So, at the point the state adopts a budget, we will be confronted with whatever deferrals they put in place. As you can see in Health and Human Services program, that's 44 million. I think I heard staff talking that that might grow as much as over 50 million, depending on what programs get bundled in. There's additional local systems in terms of 17 million. That's 1.7, isn't it? That's supposed to be 1.7 million? The miscellaneous? Mr. Jersey? It is 17. Oh, for the seven months, okay, thank you. And then Proposition 42, and local tax revenues is another 10 million. And if, in fact, this is deferred, this level is the deferral, we also lose, we're not making much interest, but we will lose interest earnings on that revenue too. Just as a reminder, and the Health and Services impacts, we have already suffered a reduction of 53 positions, another loss of 27 positions in human services agencies. At a point in time, when due to the economy, we are in fact up in all the service areas. CalWorks, which is basically our aid to families with dependent children, that's up by 12%. Food stamps are up by, I think food stamp applications are up by 27%. General relief is up by 121%. General relief is 100% county cost. And Medi-Cal is up by 5%.
The general relief you're saying is 100% county cost?
Yes. Yes, it is. General relief is 100% county cost, and it's up 121%. It's, it is actually aid to people who do not qualify, who are destitute, but do not qualify for any federal or state program. They fall into our safety net, and we have general relief payments for them. That's 100% county cost.
And Madam Chair, that's cash money that goes out?
Yes, it is. Well, it's not cash, they get
Yeah, okay.
But, right, they get money.
So, an example of someone who may not qualify might be someone who is a convicted felon.
Or might be simply a single male who may have, not have a disability that has qualified them yet for something else, but may be in the process of getting qualified for SSI or one of the federal programs. But in the period, the nine-month period of time it may take to qualify them, they need assistance, they can't live on their own. And Mr. Zimmerman, you want to come forward and talk a little bit more about these areas?
And maybe also, if you have an idea about money amounts, we're just looking at 121% increase in caseload, you know, how much money are we spending on this in general?
Yeah, in general, general aid is about $310 a month for an individual. I don't know the total volume. We went from a caseload roughly around 100, 120, and we're around 220 right now associated with it. We do, it is split up into various eligibility components. Individuals that are applying for SSI or SSP qualify, we pay for it, and then once they get determined eligible, then we get reimbursed for those funds. So, we do get some recovery on that. But you can say our actual rate of outflow probably isn't quite 100% increase, probably closer to 70%. So, we spend traditionally around a million dollars a year on the program budgeted, so.
This just kind of gives us a snapshot of how we're getting a lot more caseloads as the economy is getting worse.
Absolutely. The workload's not really reflected in the caseload growth. We showed like 27% caseload growth, however, application volume is up significantly higher than that of individuals that are coming in for services, but at this point in time, don't qualify. And so, what we have is kind of a revolving door that individuals may come in, not qualify, and then we'll see them in three months or six months later, that might be in a more impoverished situation. So, that's our current activity level.
Madam Chair, let me, quick question, the increases in caseload is because of CalWorks, food stamps, and general relief, and everything is because of the economy?
Yes, the economy is the main driver. We did do a survey of those coming into the centers, and it's regional, but the majority are due to lack of work, in the sense of cutbacks in schedules and hours that they're employed or just layoffs.
So, we have individuals that are going for food stamps or asking for food stamps that normally did not?
Absolutely. That is what we're seeing. We're seeing a new group that traditionally would be employed most of the time and be able to sustain themselves that way, due to economic factors of underemployment or no employment now are asking for aid.
For some help?
Yes.
And the Medi-Cal is up 5% because of?
Medi-Cal's at 5%, and that's probably a growth. We've been in a pattern on Medi-Cal over the last number of years in concert with healthcare agency to aggressively attack those that come into the emergency rooms and clinic systems to get them eligible for aid if they qualify. So, our threshold of population or saturation rate, if you want to look at it that way, is already fairly high, so we're not seeing a new growth of those individuals at this point. This is more of a traditional average growth in that program at this point in time.
Any other questions on the human services side of this equation? Thanks, Barry. Moving on to the deferrals in the Transportation Department, it looks like approximately 435 million will be deferred, and that's to the county road funds. There's some strange proposals out there, basically telling us that we can use existing cash, but we're caught in a catch-22, because they've already pooled that, as I understand it. I don't believe there's anybody here from, I don't think Butch is still in the audience. But our ability to use the alternative that they're telling us is limited to nonexistence. And the bottom line is that we'll basically have no other available revenue sources to backfill the loss of this, of the funds from the state. So, it will be, we will be cutting down on transportation as a result of a reduction in these revenue streams. And so, we've got 7 million in pavement rehabilitation contracts that will be deferred to August or September of 2009. Will be, vacant positions will not be filled in roads and transportation, no new equipment will be purchased, and reserves used, and to put this into perspective, and I did mention this last time, that we, the Transportation Department uses its reserves in the case of an emergency to mobilize and clean things up, so we can get back to normal operations. As an example, in the 2000 flood, the Transportation Department had to use 11 and a half million dollars in the first half of 2005, an additional 3.2 million in fiscal year 0506. And in the same year, due to that, Watershed Protection District used 13.1 million. It's one of the reasons why we maintain reserves in those departments, because nobody brings us a pile of cash whenever there's an emergency going on. We, in fact, have to spend the money to make things right, and then claim it through the feds and the state. So, it will have an impact on our ability. Supervisor Sarah Gossett?
Yeah, one quick question. We have 7 million dollars in payment rehab contracts, and we're getting a lot of rain, you know, here in the last few days. Is that going to increase? Are the amounts going to increase? Or, of course, we have the contracts, but I'm sure that more contracts are going to come because of the damage to the streets, because of rain and so forth. Have we taken that into consideration?
At this point in time, no. This is just the, given regular contracts that we would have anticipated going, moving forward with, they will have to be deferred.
But we're probably going to have an update on all the additional dollars that are needed because?
But when there's a, you know, if there's a big storm event causing us to expend down our reserves, the question will be, how soon will our reserves be replenished?
You know, talking about the loss of transportation funds and having to defer a lot of these projects, at the same time, we have the federal stimulus bill coming down, but I have heard concerns that if that money goes to the state, it will, instead of coming to the counties, be taken for the state for their deficit problems. So, I don't know if we have any opinions on that, but it would be interesting to see if that is a likelihood.
I believe in talking to our Washington lobbyists, we have, and also CSAC has pressured the, is attempting to pressure the national government to bypass the state and send directly to counties, but how successful that will be is another question. So, but it is an issue, particularly in this state.
And I know that our county has submitted, you know, a list of transportation-specific items for the stimulus package, so hopefully it won't get stopped at the state.
These are just some points about what's happening in some of the other counties, and what they, what changes they've had to take in the current year. Most of them did not go through a restructuring process that we did in 2004, '05, and they have taken a different position in the past towards expansion of benefits. So, these are the things that they're confronting right now, though. So, and we have a few options. It's pretty difficult for us as statewide to experience 3 billion in deferred payments and still carry on. Our cash reserves will dwindle, and there's no clear options, and as you had heard previously, counties are making determinations about, what can they do about programs? Can they cut programs? Can they withhold or reduce payments to families in need or implement layoffs? And a lot of them are at least at the implementing layoffs. I have to say, we are under statute required to provide these programs, and I suspect that that is, you know, an obstacle, a obstacle that we don't want to put ourselves into a position of doing things that are not legal, even though the state seems to be fairly comfortable putting us in a position where we have very few options. So, and one of the points on here is that the options of cutting back, and it's sort of what you were alluding to Supervisor Parks, all the options exacerbate the economic situation. So, you know, we don't put money out there for people to use, to spend for their living expenses. One of the options is that they end up coming on to general relief, which is 100% county cost. Another option is that they basically aren't spending in the economy, so more people get laid off. So, it's a pretty vicious cycle that we're, that the state is in, and the counties are on the forefront of providing services, so therefore, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. And that really concludes the presentation.
Are there any other questions on this?
Mr. Jersey, did you have anything you'd like to add?
You were negative enough.
I was negative? I don't have to bring in the big guns?
So, on that rosy note, does that conclude our board meeting? We've taken care of it all, then we are standing adjourned. Thank you. We see and file that great rosy report. We have a motion and a second.
You did?
That's right, Valentine's Day.
Negative, then.
If we'd all vote, please. Thank you, thank you, Roberta. No. And we stand adjourned.